And I just sit there and I told all that.
Hey, you guys all set?
I said.
How could that happen? I had to go through all, jump through all these hoops to get off this list.
Dr. Engel, you all set?
It was a mess.
We have a friend, Jack Murphy.
Okay, I think we're all set now, okay. Welcome, everyone. It's Tuesday, May 10th, 2022. It's the Warren Township High School Board Meeting, as we always do. Let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
I don't have any.
If not, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Beals. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is recognitions, and I'm pretty sharp tonight. I noticed a big trophy over there, so I'm assuming we have somebody to recognize tonight.
Yes, I'm very happy to introduce Ryan Cora. He's been at Warren, this is his 12th year at Warren, in our science department, and he leads our Science Olympiad group, who, I will let him share, were fantastic at the state tournament, so I'll let him give you all the details. Thanks for being here, Ryan.
You guys don't get to hide in the back.
Yeah. So, thank you, guys. Yes, my name is Ryan Cora, and I just want to highlight sort of the achievements that we accomplished as the Science Olympiad coach. I've been the coach for about two years, or the head coach for two years, and assistant coach for a couple of years before that. And this year, we had a really tough season, as we came off of a COVID year where everything was done virtual. This year, everything had to be done satellite, which meant we had to do it in-house. So it still wasn't the normal Science Olympiad competition format that we're used to. And despite those challenges, the kids really came out and competed. And so, at state this year, we actually took first place for the first time in our history.
All right, all right.
We had 17 students competing at state, and 15 of them received medals, including, sorry, excuse me, 15 of them got first-place medals, and 16 of them all got medals. And so it was one of the strongest performances that Warren has ever had in Science Olympiad. And so I wanted to introduce, these are two of our three team captains this year. This is Druval Bat and Vijay, who.
Yeah. Hi, guys.
Outstanding.
Just a special thanks, I have an assistant coach, Mr. Green, who wasn't able to be with us, and I wanted to thank all the science teachers who helped you guys throughout the, throughout the season, have kind of taken some time between classes and after school to work with the kids. And definitely thank you, guys, for your service as a school board, and allowing us and giving us the opportunity to compete. So, thank you all.
Congratulations. Outstanding.
Those kids are so smart.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
They're so smart.
Dave?
Next up is reception of visitors. I did not see the book, I did not look into it, but if anybody would like to address the board, now is the time. Feel free to address the podium. That being said, we're just going to move right on forward to the president's report. I only have two things I want to bring up, and they're both on, kind of on the same topic. They might come up later on, but I just remind people that tomorrow, we've got a presentation, community referendum presentation at the Wadsworth Village Hall at 3:00 and 3:30. So if anybody can make it there, that'd be fantastic.
I'm planning to be there.
Okay, awesome. And just another reminder, we still have two open spots with our weekly.
Oh, I filled them in for myself.
Like I said, thank you, everyone, for filling in all the remaining spots at Starbucks.
You said two were left.
What's that?
Sorry, I'm just creating my own conversation.
So, now why I'm confused, but I'm old and blonde, so it happens a lot. Are there openings or not?
No, I just filled them.
You filled them, okay, great. Just checking. Thank you, everyone, for filling up all the spots at Starbucks.
Who's on first?
Exactly. That's all I had, so I'm just going to be quiet and move on to committee reports.
There's no committee reports tonight.
Right on to superintendent's report.
Thank you. I do just have a few things for the board. One, is I saw a few board members were connecting with Gene about your ability and interest in making graduation on the 22nd. So if we can just tighten up those details for people, that would be great, just so we can know who is able to make it on that special day for our 22 graduates. And we did, a couple reminders, we did just from a FOIA perspective first. We do, when emails come in and they're about FOIAs, you know, or if they, if people reach out to you and say, "Hey, I've got a frame of information for the district." Please just remind them that there's information on the district website about three of us that somebody can't contact as FOIA officers. So sometimes it comes in just randomly and things like that, but there are information to make sure that, if you can just direct them to our FOIA officers or to our webpage, that way they'll be able to make sure they get it in a timely way, so that they're not thinking they submitted something when it's just kind of sitting out there in air. So, the other thing is, we did have two FOIAs since our last meeting. One was from Han, Snow and Ice, related to the 21-22 snow removal services, and one was from Kent Cason, related to referendum financial information. And I think that's all I had on the superintendent's report itself.
Who are the three FOIA officers?
Mary Zulo, myself, and Gene Love.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up is a graduation update.
Just, I already got from the board, just make sure that we've connected on that, which I think we're pretty good. So, I think most of the people we had known and with Tom and Talia tonight, I think we're pretty good with, with the planning.
Okay. Next up is a consent agenda. Any changes to the consent agenda? If not, I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes Exhibit A, personal recommendations, numbers 115 through 119, as posted, and Exhibit B, athletics and activities, personal recommendations, number 40B and through 49B, as posted, the payment of bills from May 10, 2022, in the amount of $899,365.36, and regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of April 12, 2022.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson. Mr. Drake?
I abstain.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
I have six yes and one abstention, motion carries.
Got you. On to new business.
Dr. Engel, can you come up about the expenditure of funds for '23?
Good evening, everybody. So this is to pretty much open up purchasing for the FY '23 school year that's going to be coming up here slowly, well, fast, if you will. It allows us to go three months until the budget's passed to expend up to 25% of anticipated revenues. Any questions?
I move to approve expending more than, no more than 25% of the tentative budgeted expenditures for the '22-'23 school year, as necessary to operate the district before a final budget is approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Drake. Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Thanks. The next item, Item B, is the approval. I'm, Mr. Geo Caris asked me, he would normally give this little request, but the approval of our FY '23 consolidated district plan for our federal grant programs. So, the only state board of education requires districts to develop a plan annually that illustrates how federal funds will be used to support the stated objectives of the various federal grants, while maintaining compliance with the grant requirements. The consolidated district plan is a summary of goals for eight different federal grants, which are Title I, II, III, IV, IDA, SR II, SR III, and foster care transportation. The district cannot submit grant applications itself until we have received approval on our district plan. If we are approved for the school, school-wide Title I waiver, which we talked about at our last meeting, we will need to amend our district plan and bring it back to the board for approval before resubmitting this to ISBE.
Questions? I move to approve the fiscal year '23 consolidated district plan for federal grant programs as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And the next one is the approval of the developer donation agreement with AR Building Company, Inc., a Pennsylvania corporation. We have not seen one of these in quite a few years, so this is a development that's going to be happening just south of Washington and Milwaukee. It's going to be referred to as the Milwaukee Avenue Apartments over there. There's a grand total of 81 one-bedroom apartments and 72 two-bedroom apartments. And the donation, the developer donation fees coming in, with total of $21,870, and then upon final completion and permit for occupancy, the other half. So grand total of $43,740 coming into the district, so. Any questions?
Yeah. Does that at all seem low to you? The impact fees from this particular, or what's your take on it?
On the one-bedroom, there's really not much, you know, as far as like a student counts. If you look at a demographer study, one-bedroom and two-bedroom, it's usually kind of low as well. That's once you start getting the three, four, or five-bedroom homes, that you know there's kids coming. So, they're going to have a great, a much higher impact fee. Also, this is another kind of time to maybe bring up, this, the impact fees have not been visited since 2007, or was it '09? 2007, so it might be worthwhile to kind of.
Doesn't the county broker those on our behalf?
Uh, we give them the agreement annually, but they, we don't have the broker, we have to, we come up with the actual dollar amount.
We do.
Uh, it's, it's based on per-acre cost, yeah.
Got you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? I move to approve the developer donation agreement with AR Building Company, Inc., as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Martinez. Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Next up is a paperback book bid.
Yeah, this is actually a good bid for this year, I will say. We went out to bid, this was back on April the 5th, I believe. We had the bid opening May 2nd at 1:30. The bids actually came in quite competitive this year. Just to give kind of reference, last year, we're at about $89,586. The year before that, we were over $120,000. It's starting to normalize again. We had $78,265 and change, as far as all of the paperback novels, not only for English, but also for Spud, also for foreign language as well. So, I don't want to say that the market's kind of coming back to normal-ish, but at least prices are coming back. So, right now, in front of you is a Superior Text for $64,054.99, Next Level Libraries for $8,602.49, followed for $3,066.40, Book Source at $1,793.45, Textbook Warehouse at $638.50, and Children's Plus at $109.70, for a total of $78,265.73. Any questions?
Is there anything in our future where we might do with less paperback books and more online books?
Electronic?
That's a great question. Mr. Geo Caris and I have had this conversation when it comes to annotating, actually like writing and taking notes. It's, I don't know if we're going to get there, Mr. Schultz, but possibly.
I can appreciate that. I'm not making any promises. Colleges do it all the time. Just saying.
We're not there. I'll ask Chris again when he's here.
You'll get the same question next year, so. It, it just seems, yeah, you can't annotate, and there's other ways, you have to take notes, but those are hurdles to get over. Okay. Any other question? Go ahead.
How much less expensive is, is it for electronic?
Honestly, I don't know off the top of my head. For licensing for each one of the books, I'm, I'm not sure. I would have to, we would have to do a deep dive into that, and then making sure that they're all available electronically for licensure as well. Because some of these, especially the foreign language ones, are going to be, I think, a little bit more difficult to come by. We had seven total bidders, and a couple of them, there was just only one source for them, so. But some of the widely available ones, I would definitely say yes, so.
Majority of them would probably be available.
Yeah. Now, Chris, our next meeting, just talk a little bit through that with the board.
Yeah, that'd be fantastic. I mean, I don't envision a day where we don't have any books, but it just seems like there's some books we could, I mean, we don't annotate every book, just those ugly English books. I mean, the rest of them, there's possibilities, so. If there's nothing else, I move to approve the paperback book bid and award the contracts to the recommended vendors in the amount of $78,265.73 for the '22-'23 school year.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Drake. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Drake? Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Items E and F are action items related to appeals under complaints filed pursuant to our uniform grievance procedure, both items E and F.
Are there any other questions or conversation on these?
Not for me.
If not, I move to affirm the superintendent's decision on complaint number 2022-1, filed pursuant to Policy 2.260, Uniform Grievance Procedure.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson. Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez? Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Next up is a second motion. I move to affirm the superintendent's decision on complaintant 2022-2, filed pursuant to Policy 2.260, Uniform Grievance Procedure.
Second.
Mr. Drake?
Motion by Schultz and second by Drake. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Drake? Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Next up is old business.
So at our last meeting, for all board members, but for our last meeting, the topic came up, reoccurred about the Eastern School Road property. So just as a reminder, we thought we would circle back to just reminding the board of some, some recent history. Because back in September 14th, '21, our board discussed the details surrounding the purchase of the land back in 2010, and at that time stated that the board was not in favor of selling the land and wasn't interested in hiring a demographer study. As a reminder, this was after the board learned some of the history of the 2010 purchase for approximately $8 million of the 100 acres to accommodate potential future growth of the school district. At the time, the district enrollment was just about 4,500. Our cap is about 4,800 with our two campuses. There was about 6,000 acres of undeveloped land at the time, most of it to the north, that obviously was an issue for trying to make sure that potentially the district had options for future growth back in 2010. So, we decided to review this topic at the site, at tonight's meeting, just to see if there's any further information that board members want related to this. We, you know, as I mentioned, the board decided not to go for a demographer study back in September. That's certainly something that we could do, but if there's any other questions along this line that the board wants us to investigate and answer, we certainly can do a little homework before our next meeting and try to get any other, any other questions answered. Is there any other things people are wondering?
Just one question. So for clarification, the demographer, demographer study would give us a forward-looking view into the population and then potential, uh, school attendance and totals, correct?
Yes, more so than just our, it gives a more holistic look at what our enrollment would look like on a number of factors, not just butts and seats at our, if you will, at our sender districts. It looks a little more holistically, birth rates and things of that nature.
Do you think they look at like, if your land is developed and that type of stuff? I mean, where they say, oh, you got all this undeveloped land. If that was developed, it would be XYZ, or ABC, or maybe just find out if they have that skill, or that thought process?
Yeah, we could find that out for sure. Find out if that's a piece of where they're at with it.
I mean, that'd be interesting to know, because people say you'll never need that, and I don't happen to agree with that. But I think. to agree with that, but I think there's a lot of people that are saying that. I think they're relatively uninformed, but, you know, if we had a, somebody else who said, "Yeah, if, if that was all developed, you would have, you know, another 2,000 students," or whatever the, whatever the number would be. I don't, you know, I don't have any idea. That, and then, it was also said that a lot of that land is with the Lake County Forest Preserve. I don't think that's true, but I'd like to find out. So, can we contact the Lake County Forest Reserve? Find out how much of that land is actually theirs? Because some of it might be bequeathed to them that we don't know about, you know?
Sure, we can, so, and maybe even broad, more broadly than just the forest preserve, trying to find out how, you know, at the time, certainly, it was six, it was 6,000 acres, right?
It's all still empty. I just go through there the other day, so.
What's that?
It's all still empty.
Yeah, I know, I mean, we can find out, we can get a more updated number. It still might be 6,000. Don't know what it is, but we probably should at least get a more updated number to what that 6,000 is, if it has changed. Some of it may be gone to the forest preserve, some not, but we can definitely get a more precise answer to that. Any other questions? Do you have any?
And separate from understanding that part of it, do we even know what this land is worth? We paid $8 million in 2010.
There was a comment made at a board meeting, I think a year ago. Dr. Engel, I think, had a rough estimate.
Yeah, we can certainly get an update, and we can do a little work just to make sure we, might cost us just a little, but usually doesn't cost so much just to get a simple appraisal on a piece of property like that. So, we, and then, I think we, the board does need, you know, at some point in time, I think that question's been asked, you know, formally and informally, and it'd be good to just know. That's, that's separate, by the way, that question itself is separate by any means of the formal process that we reviewed with the board of any potential intention to sell land. Just simply getting appraisal of land is a totally, you know, certainly, that's an easy thing that we can and should do at times, just to have a proper appraisal of our property. So, we can definitely work on that end of it. It's, it's a great question.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think what we're talking about is moving from kind of a general narrative, that it's a good idea to hold on to this because we might need it in the future, to wrapping some data and information and facts around that statement.
Yeah.
We, we need to be able to do that. If, for instance, hypothetical, somebody told me that land was worth $25 million, my desire to hold on to it might be a little bit different than if somebody told me it was worth $8 million. And if somebody told me we're gonna need it 30 years from now, my position probably would be different than if somebody told me we're gonna need it eight years from now. We don't know the answers to those questions. I don't wanna spend any money, though, to figure that out.
So, if my memory serves me right, we, I swear, I remember a number of $7 million if we were to sell it in, and please correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't wanna speak out of turn, but it was during a board meeting where that was mentioned at the, what we think is the going rate. The other was the demographer, when we went out to bid for, and they came back. It was a substantial dollar amount.
I remember, I don't remember what it was.
It was like between $5,000 and $10,000, I believe, for a good demographer.
Yeah, it wasn't small.
Yeah, it wasn't small, and at that point, I think we held off. I think part of our issue here is timing and the referendum. So, I think there's a piece here of, no matter how we feel about it right now, with a vote for the referendum happening within a month and a half, to me, this is now a separate, has become now a separate issue. And there could be some good long-term kind of outlook on this, like what you said, wrapping data around it, but I don't wanna, anyone to get illusion that this is something that I think we would have an answer for in the next month and a half, so just to be, you know, expectations set kind of clearly.
Talk about what we can do for free, though. Find out from, from the county, how much of that land is actually...
We certainly can find out.
Not with the forest, because that's, there's the illusion out there that Karen Thorson, and it's no secret, was saying that a lot of that is now with the forest preserve, but I...
Going to the forest preserve.
We'll do a little, we can, it's, cost us nothing to get an answer to that.
Right.
Right, so we'll do that in the next meeting.
Because that could change our outlook, the appraisal of it, and I'll guarantee you, it's worth more than $7 million, but Mike Engel did say that.
I remember that being stated.
And that's a number that you could say, "Well, yeah, it's gotta be worth at least what you paid for." Well, of course, but the person that bought it, the person, the company that bought it before we bought it from them paid 13, back in, before 2008. And it was, it was on the verge of being built into homes. I mean, the sewer is there, the water's there, the electric's there, it's platted, and they were getting ready to go when the collapse came in 2008. And then I, it was AIG that actually owned it, and they had a terrible problem with collapsing mortgages and all that, so they had to sell it to cover themselves, so they sold it for $8 million. Took a $5 million haircut.
So, is it worth, it may cost us a little bit of money, let's just say $1,000. Is it worth $1,000 to get an appropriate appraisal on the property at this point in time to the board?
I would think that there is, because if you look at the different platforms of social media, or, you know, what is it called? The neighborhood one?
Nextdoor.
Nextdoor. There's a lot of chatter from community members that they, they're asking a lot, and there's a lot of negative conversation on why we have that property, why we're holding off on it, and what is, and wanting a valid reason. And the day that I actually, the Saturday that I actually spent with Dr. Algram at Starbucks, we did have a mom of the district, and most of our conversation with her was primarily on that topic. So, if, yeah, if we could have a decent assessment, so we have some kind of backup to say, "Okay, you know, the board is deciding to keep this for this reason for now," that should settle, not settle, but it should help alleviate some of their questioning, or, you know, maybe we find out that we have to revisit, we don't know, but at least we can, we have more solid, updated information to say, "This is why the board stands in this position right now." That's my opinion.
Yep.
All right, thank you for that. That's, we'll, my, we'll work on that immediately, and we'll have some answers by our next meeting in two weeks. So, that's all, I guess, for the Stern School Road discussion.
Roger. Who's next?
We have next on the agenda, I think, is the return to school. Again, this meeting, we have no formal return to school update. We are excited that prom, I know you guys were talking about graduation on the 22nd, but prom is actually on the 14th, so Saturday, we have normal prom again, and that's exciting for our juniors and seniors.
And that's at the Stevenson?
Yep, at the Stevens Convention Center.
Steven?
So, that's for the return to school. And the last item was just the referendum, old business updates. All I was gonna mention, I know Mr. Schultz mentioned that tomorrow, we have the Village of Wadsworth, I think Mr. Drake might be there, that's at 3:00 and 3:30. We continue to have our Saturday Starbucks that Ms. Martinez mentioned. We actually do have the question posted. In fact, as of April 29th, the question itself has been posted. It's on our website, it's on doors at our campuses. It was on our last mailing, which is probably in the mail right now. I, we're hopeful that it would be in the mail right now, not knowing exactly when it's gonna get to homes, but we had one more district mailing that included the question language itself on that mailing, so that will hopefully be getting to homes this week. So, that's kind of where we're at with just updates on referendum information dissemination. Any other questions for me, or?
Nope. Thank you very much. Next up is our second reception of visitors. It's anybody's chance, if they would like to address the board, you're more than welcome to. I wasn't looking at anyone in particular. Anyone's welcome. But I'll go on assumption nobody would like to address us tonight, and that's okay. We'll skip the board discussion on visitors' comments, which just brings us to the German. I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Schultz and second by Anderson. Mrs. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Demonti? Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beals?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.